Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Vader City Council meeting on February 22nd, 2018. The time is 6:02 PM. Roll call.
Judy Costello.
Here.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Joe Scheid.
Here.
Leona Sander Hunter.
Here.
And Mike Parsons and the mayor have both asked to be excused.
All right. We're okay with excusing them? Yes, I see yes, nods yes. All right, very good. Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Costello, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I'd love to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mayor's report. I don't have anything from the mayor. Jill, do we have anything from the mayor tonight?
Oh, well.
Nothing from the mayor. Council reports? Start on the... Start to my left and work our way down.
Do you want to go first?
Yes.
At our next meeting, Jill, I would like to talk about the two wrecking yards that we have in our community and have a discussion about how we might handle those. And I should also like to request an update on the school and where that stands. And let's see, one more thing. I'm going to try to research this myself, but if not, I'll come to Jill and ask for help. But the deed for the Park Street Park... I don't know what that park's official name is over there.
Georgia Morris.
Georgia Morris. Georgia Morris, okay. Georgia Morris.
What was the name after Georgia Morris?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, nice name.
Park, okay. And I should like to look at that to see what the rules and regulations are on it. If it will always remain a park.
I know.
Or if it can be sold or whatever. Just to kind of see where it all stands, because it's kind of there. And I think that's everything I have.
One three ahead of me. Oh, maybe. Remember our... There is a May Day meeting tomorrow.
No.
No? March.
First or fourth or something.
Yes, first Friday.
First Friday, March is the second.
Okay, March 2nd. May Day meeting, 9 o'clock, Community Center. Everybody is welcome except for me because it's Jason Hunter.
Wait a minute, I got a disappointment with that date.
Seriously?
Yeah.
You like it out of your duties.
No. That's why I knew what day of the week it was, because it's a...
I will be there then. So, there goes. See what I know? Okay, bring my choices.
I'm good.
All right. Agenda approval. Any additions?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for February 22nd, 2018.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Sander Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
We didn't get our minutes from the last meeting.
Yes. I guess I did. I got my packet early. Yeah. I will be able to make the motion because I don't get them so.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the council meeting from February 8th, 2018.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Sander Hunter to approve the council meeting minutes for February 8th. And I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Would you like my minutes?
No, I'm fine.
Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the voucher for the end of February for 2018, $19,745.86 for a grand total, February 2018, $33,689.11.
Who a motion to approve the vouchers as written? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Costello. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports? We don't have any special reports tonight. Nothing special. All right. Yes?
Kelly and Scott weren't going to be here tonight. The park board announced that they were going to report at the next meeting. They wanted to have one more meeting before. So they were going to be here at the March meeting. And the planning committee will have something for you at the next meeting as well.
The March 8th meeting? Would that be that meeting?
Yes.
I'm going to be out of town. That meeting might as well just throw it out there. The last day of my out-of-town-ness, but I won't be here.
All right. City business. Item one, council to consider ordinance 2018-02, code enforcement regulation update. Jill, would you like to?
Sure.
Be the voice on this one?
So, some of the concerns that have been expressed about the code enforcement regulations, one of those items is being addressed in this proposal here. It is a change to, as you can see on page three of the ordinance, it is adding the option that if someone receives a notice of violation and then they appeal the notice of violation, which we've already dropped that fee in half, so it's 250 now. But this is adding the verbiage that if they win the appeal, then they can get their money back. Basically, if they win their appeal, then that's saying that the city shouldn't have sent them a notice of violation and so they shouldn't have had to pay for the appeal. So this is getting their money back. So that's just another step to make this a little bit more friendly and helpful. If you notice on page two, there are also two areas, they're right at the top, where the word "public" has been removed. And the reason for that is because this hearing that happens, the appeal hearing, there's two kinds of public hearing. There's public, capital P, public hearing, and then there's public hearing lowercase p. The capital P, public hearing, means that it's a certain type of hearing that has to be advertised to the public like 14 days in advance and has to be in the newspaper and everyone has to be notified so that they can come and make comment. That's the type of public hearing. But that's not what was meant here. And so, but just having the word "public," even though it's lowercase, meaning that it is a meeting that's open to the public as opposed to an official public hearing, it was confusing and made some confusion because it said "public hearing" before "hearing." So even though it was lowercase, it still created some confusion. And in the past, when we had an appeal hearing, some people thought that we had to advertise and that we hadn't. And so it caused some confusion. So in order to avoid the confusion, the city attorney recommended just dropping the word "public" there so that it's not a confusion as to whether it's an official public hearing or if it's a hearing that's open to the public. So she said, let's just... It's still open to the public, yes. It's still a hearing because it's a... But it doesn't have to be officially advertised in the newspaper, but it's not that type of a public hearing. It's still open to the public. But just removing that so that there's no confusion and misunderstanding that...
Is it necessary for this ordinance to have ex parte? I don't know about all of you, but I don't know what any of this...
All of that, this is already in place. This ordinance is already in place. The only thing, and it's been approved by council, it's gone through all that and has been. This is just a section of the ordinance that because of the request of some of the public and the council, the mayor asked her to make an addition, that section 14 on page three. And since she was already amending this section, she went ahead and made the suggestion to remove the public. But all of this is already approved and already in place.
Okay, well, I just don't understand. Number 10 says "ex parte communications." I don't know, I'm just, I just live here. I don't know what "ex parte" means.
I don't know what that means either.
And on number 11, it says "shall be de novo," you know? Well, I have to go to... When someone receives this ordinance and has to go to a dictionary to look it up, I can't believe that we as council wrote it or approved it or designed it or anything, so...
This was all, this was all written by the city attorney. I mean, and it's up to the city, not the city, but the state regulations as far as what is required.
So council no longer gets to make ordinances? It's just kind of done?
No, that's not what I'm saying at all.
Oh, no, no, no.
I'm just saying, she wrote it according to state regulations and what is the standard and what can be held up in court. If there's something in it you don't like, that you want to change, we would have to address that with her and say, you know, we don't like this or we don't know what this means or whatever. Is there a reason why we can't remove it? You know, and then she could let us know legally if it's something that needs to be in there or not. I don't know those answers. I'm not legal.
Well, maybe at least if she could put in parentheses what it means, because I have no idea what "ex parte" or "de novo" means. If she could put in parentheses so a non-attorney or a non-state employee knows what that...
I just, right, I just kind of read it and went, oh, okay, I've just received this and then I'm going to have to go look up some of the basic things. And I just thought that, you know, we're just normal people receiving this. Where this is going... And I don't know if people looked it up before they approved it originally. I don't know. Right, right. So I don't know that, you know? I mean, those are, yeah, they're legal terms. I don't know the answer to that.
We have a comment from the public. Would you like to take it?
Sure. Saying now this was written by a lawyer, for a lawyer, does the city have a Blacks Law Dictionary here that they can translate?
The internet?
No.
I have the internet.
So you don't have a Blacks Law Dictionary here?
I don't even know what that is.
That's, that will, that will tell you...
It's old school.
I'm sorry, I'm old school.
Jill, is there any reason to have the $250 specified in this? That was one of my other questions.
No, it's in, it's in, not in this section. It's not necessary to have it in this...
The fee schedule?
It's in the fee schedule. It's listed as, as an appeal fee for, so for any appeals.
Well, I like these changes. I know we were interested in the whoever wins doesn't pay.
Right, that was the number one thing.
We were all liking that.
Yes, yes.
And then I can also understand the removal of the public.
Well, I noticed in number eight, it says "The hearing shall be open to public observation."
Sure.
That makes sense. Rather than "public," not really "public," of being "public," so...
I like the changes. I think we should approve the changes. And if there's anything else we want, we can always go back and amend that. But I'd like to get it on the books that...
Yes.
I'm okay with that. If we can come back at some point and talk about the "parte," the words I don't know about because...
The words?
Yeah, the verbiage, just the legal verbiage and maybe get some clarification. Even if we did like Lana suggested, put a little parentheses in there with whatever it is to just... Other than that, I'm fine with it too. It would be kind of interesting if I typed in "de novo" on my computer where it's supposed to spell check it to turn it into.
I know, and some of these I've looked up and I know I looked up differently, but I can't even remember what it was. I don't remember.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the changes and approve ordinance number 2017-06.
Is this ordinance 2018-02?
Oh, okay, I'm looking. Oh, I'm sorry, 2018-02.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve ordinance 2018-02. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Sander Hunter. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of approving ordinance number 2018-02, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
So Ms. Costello, if you would like to provide any of, you know, circle or whatever, any of the things that you want changed. I know this is just one section. If you want to get, if you want to get the whole ordinance, but if you're just interested in this one section of it, yeah, whatever.
I'll get it to me and I will, I will look it up and answer it. Thank you.
Item two, report on status of A Street project. So everyone has the copy of the email from Devin Jackson, our engineer working on the project. At this point, I think it addresses all the concerns that Judy had. But to summarize, this is the 90% package. He's pretty much done with all the design work and he's about exhausted all of his, the funds allotted to him to do that. If we wanted to do any other changes, we'd probably have to pay for them out of pocket now. The good news is they're expecting to go out for bids after the May Day event, or excuse me, out for bids next month and then not start construction until after the May Day event. So that's all.
And we're confirmed on that. You feel comfortable in that? It's not going to start after May Day?
That's the plan.
Wonderful.
Yep, yeah, it won't impact May Day at all.
And landscaping is just limited to grass?
Yeah, so with the landscaping, it's, with the TIB, who is the funding, it's the Transportation Improvement Board, you know, their goal is to build roads, not to build, to plant bushes. And that money comes from the state gas tax and other fundings like that. It's our money and we get the grant when we apply for it. And so they, they're, pretty much their landscaping is, let's just fix what we messed up in the process of construction. And not, if you want to do anything else, you're going to have to pay for it. So in the case of our project, it's the decorative lighting, replacing any grass. And we've requested perhaps some stamped concrete to give it that brick, the areas of it to look brick. And then we'll get two bids. We'll get with and without that. And if the stamped concrete is too expensive, we can also, we can always scale that back and do regular concrete. So we'll have multiple options when we go out for bids on that.
The one thing that I have trouble with on the stamped concrete, I know it looks nice, but it does trap water and it freezes and causes slick spots. Like Castrock has that pretty stamped concrete, but boy, I don't know if they have problems with it, honestly. I don't use a lot of time down there, but I always think, gosh, that just looks like a problem waiting to happen.
What we're looking at, aren't they all angled down and then go into the drainage? It seems like the portions, we were looking at the stamped portions, they were angled down.
Yeah, at the pedestrian areas.
Oh.
Not the whole thing, just the corners. But we did speak with the Public Works employee in Napa Line about that stamped, the stamped concrete. And they do have to seal it every couple of years and there's some pressure washing and some additional maintenance that goes along with it. So it's something for us to consider. But we'll have a choice. We'll get both bids and we can decide what we want to do at that time.
And we did just buy a brand new pressure washer.
And we did. We have a comment from the public. Would you like to take it? Yes, well, two comments, all right.
I used to be a cement manufacturer. And stamping is quick and easy and it makes it look nice. Color, it comes pouring out of the truck gray and then you take a powder
Yeah, it's great.
And just trowel that powder in. And that's fairly inexpensive. Is it an extra cost? Yeah, but I don't think it's going to be a significant extra cost.
Yeah, we'll see when we get, when we get the bids here next month, hopefully. Donna, do you have something you want to say?
I just want to say, what is the point of doing all of these? Narrowing the road and what, what?
That's, that's the state regulations they recommend. They, the width of the roadway and the maintenance of the roadway is too great. So they, when they come and redesign the road...
Well, it's not state road. What do they care?
Well, they, they do, they do hold the money. They have the checkbook. And so if we, if we want free roads, we need to follow their guidelines.
Literally, after they put it in, we have to, we have to repair it and maintain it so it gives us a smaller area to have to maintain.
I know. You know, they did that one in Chehalis by the courthouse, that road that goes in there. And they, it was a nice white road. People had room to park and everything. And then they did this thing to it. And now it narrows everybody down. And then when you get to the intersection, it makes it, they have those little wings that come out like they want to do in here. And it just makes it narrower. I, it's, I don't know what the point is of that myself.
Can I respond?
Yeah, it's your meeting.
You know, I didn't like this plan, not even one little tiny bit, until I sat in and actually looked at some real pictures of what it could look like. And the more I looked at it, the more I liked the looks of it. And also the kittly things that come out, whatever you call them, those little wings, those are all for safety factors. And the fact that we have so many elderly people in this area. I mean, elderly, not, I'm not counting you.
We need somewhere a wider place for a chair to go to.
Yeah, and you've got the little bump things there. And I think it's, I think in the later on that it's all done, it's going to be really, really nice. By the time I walked out, I was sold on.
I'm missing the safety factor.
So you can be standing at the crosswalk and a car can't jump the curb as easy because of the curb there?
You can see around the parked cars.
How many people have we had killed down there?
But that's the safety factor.
Again, that's state requirements. State requiring that if there's a crosswalk, you have to have these certain safety things.
No, I get that. I just don't get the wings. I don't get that narrowing down.
So you can see around the parked cars. And as busy as Judy's going to be, we'd better be able to see around all those parked cars.
We have another, we have another comment? Yes?
On the issue of putting in grass, we have some fruit trees there now. If they're going to tear those out, can we request they put them back in?
It shouldn't affect those. They'll be working further in from those.
That's another thing. Can I hold you to that?
Yes.
So you won't be walking on tap, title case?
We'll have more grass, not less grass.
I see what you're saying. All that, they may damage and kill them, but okay, we'll see. I'll hand you the bill for the trees I replaced them with.
I'll go down to the nursery.
Those trees are almost on private property.
I understand, that wasn't my point.
They're home to replacement, they're on private property.
That's not a discussion for here.
Okay.
Any other questions or anything or any other?
What's the number of light fixtures?
Let's see, it's that S-A icon.
Eighty-three. On the A Street, first, four, zero, two, three, four.
Total of five, that's right. I remember him saying that.
Which page is that on?
This is that last one with the three vertical roadways. It's the same roadway. The one in the middle, all those little itty-bitty numbers that cover the whole thing is, it's like a lights, it's a light spectrum analysis. They ran this official light spectrum analysis and every number corresponds to the amount of light. How much light will be at that location from these lamps?
So they're going to put, they're going to put three in there and I see those three. And so will they take out the current ones?
Yes. So that they will be replaced.
Is there one, am I seeing one just north of Sixth Street but on the opposite side? Is that one, I can't tell.
Yeah, in front of the, in front of the jail.
Yeah.
Near the jail.
So there's one there as well. And then there's one down by the post office on the corner on that side.
At the intersection.
Okay, so there's three on the right side and two on the left side.
And I did ask about there being fewer lights and he said these will put off so much more light that you wouldn't need the extra lights. Well, they were complaining because the little lights that are up there right now, we had numerous complaints when we first presented that they were too bright. Are they shooting up? No, no.
Yes, and these are the lights down there. And these are more directional so that they don't go up into this.
Yeah, there's like a reflector inside and it reflects down.
Are they doing down in front of the jail? Are they grabbing?
This sidewalk will continue all the way down, across the intersection and go all the way down to the parking area.
That would be great.
So that whole area is going to get, it's going to get entirely paved, parking spots, sidewalks, the whole, the whole thing, yeah. You have another comment from the public?
Now, if I remember correctly, there actually will be more parking spots than there are now, even though they're narrowing it, right?
I haven't counted, but there are a significant number of parking spots still.
Have you, has the city contacted the property owners on the street to let them know what your plans are, what you're going to be doing?
The church has been contacted. They're actually planning on removing all of their gravel areas at that time. And they're going to, they're going to subcontract with whatever contractor we choose and get that all paved. So the whole area down by the park will be paved and there won't be any gravel anymore.
What about the other ones?
I don't, I don't know.
Judy, have you gotten a lot of?
We haven't, we haven't sent out anybody. Well, they won't be over on my side working.
What about the other side, the post office people?
Yeah, they will, they're going to rip that whole sidewalk out.
They're not going to rip it out? No, they'll just change the fixtures. The sidewalk's going to stay the same.
Yeah, and are, yeah, no, I have not gotten any letter.
So the people on the other side, if they have plans to do something on that side, would they, have they been contacted to say, you know, you might want to give us a thought?
Not yet. Well, and the other thing too, along that same line is two of those families over there come and go, obviously, out of that front door on A Street. And then, how long will I be down? March, April? No. We're looking at a couple, a couple of months. So, so the middle of summer?
Well, I don't know. The way Devin was talking about it was...
I know, but the other people reviewing it are saying it needs to be longer than that. So, longer than what he's suggesting.
Or that just blows my little building, all the pieces.
So are you going to contact the owners? They're going to contact people on this side of the street?
I don't know, is that standard procedure?
I have no idea.
Because I know there'll be, there'll be, there's, in some of the other documents, they're talking about like traffic control changes and construction updates and things like that. It was all part of it.
The contract company would post something on the doors, you know, letting them know what's coming.
Yeah, there's, there was contingencies for that.
There's a whole door there now and they had plans to put a door there. You know, I mean, if somebody had plans to build something there, whoever that might be, and they didn't realize that the street was going to be torn up in a pile of mud, I thought maybe it's a metal letter saying, we're going to tear the street up, you know, just FYI.
On the vacant property?
Right. There's only, what, five owners over there?
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's not very many. I don't know. I don't know how that, that works, the construction process.
So good suggestion, bring it up to the mayor and the engineers.
I think that would be a really good idea. You know, even Carol Broom. I mean, there's a whole bunch of different scenarios down there. I wonder how they will handle post office traffic.
It sounded like he was talking about, he was talking about traffic control during that time, like, like there was always going to be one lane that was open.
That means that I'll take the whole month off, two months off, maybe three months off. Do you get reimbursement for wages or anything? Should I talk to the engineer about that?
Sure.
Thank you, let me, I'll get right on that.
His email address, his email address is on that, on that.
Yeah, but we could still park them on five or six there and walk through. Your sidewalk's off. I got the eyes.
I don't think that's been included in the budget, so.
Joe, thank you very much for providing this. I'm excited about the fact you're not going to start till after May Day.
That was, that was part of the deal.
Oh, yes, that, very nice. Changes our whole world. Changes our whole world. That makes us very, very happy.
It's part of the deal.
Yes, appreciate that very much. Very considerate.
All right. Ready to move on? All right, item three, council update on limb branch removal project. I know that you were going to get ahold of that gentleman again with the deal.
Yes, I have tried. Mike was able to reach the gentleman after our last meeting because council had approved his... Mike was able to reach the gentleman after our last meeting because council had approved his, um, offer contingent upon verifying that it wasn't gonna cost us any additional money for the bay, to have him build the bay. And so he was able to reach him and verify that, yes, that is correct, that it would not cost us any additional money. So, your motion went through and so I contact, well, I attempted to contact him and haven't heard back from him yet. Let him know that you guys approved it and that we're ready to get moving on it. And could he please contact us so we can get it together? So far, I haven't heard anything from him. So I'm assuming he's probably in the middle of a project or something and, um, I'll reach out to him, continue to reach out to him until, um, I get ahold of him. Mike did want to report, Mike Parsons wanted to report that the size of those blocks are two feet tall, two feet wide and six feet long. So just FYI, that's the size.
But they're solid, did you say?
Yep, solid, like solids?
Okay.
That's something you just pick right up and play with and.
No.
So nobody can pack them on?
Right.
Right?
That's the good thing about family.
Won't say anybody, there's some motivated individuals out there.
I, yes, I totally understand that. So, are we gonna have an opportunity to talk about our charges?
Our charges?
Wait a minute, what charges?
Five dollars to bring all of your stuff in and then we'll give you all the little mulchi back for five more dollars to take it. So, did you have any thoughts about that, Jay?
Uh, no, I, I think it's kind of like a paper kind of nightmare for somebody, but it's a great idea if it works or if it is workable.
What if you have paper night, I mean, if we had a science sheet where a person's bringing their branches, sign the paper and, and remark that they paid their five dollars and, you know, we showed the, the exact amount of money and put it in the count just for the chipper? Is, is there additional paperwork that we have to look into to do something like this?
I think it would have to go through the city budget to do that. I, I, I don't know of any additional, um, there may, may need to pass an ordinance or a resolution or something stating that that money is specifically for this particular project and it can't be spent on something else, I'm just trying to think. Again, I'd have to check with our insurance and attorney people to see if there's any other safety related things that we have to be concerned about. But if we, because we'll require somebody to man the station, right? And.
Because if we do it on the, on our system.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going there again.
No, we're not gonna do it on our system, we saw where that got us, bags and garbage and, yeah.
So what we're thinking is like two Saturdays or two weekends a month or something like that, have a volunteer there. Other than that, the gate just goes back up and it's shut down, you can't just come in.
I don't see why it would be a problem, but again, I'd have to check with the professionals.
So it's good.
Right now, it's good, yeah.
Cause it's so full.
Okay, yeah. And that would help us keep it under control too.
But Mike had mentioned last meeting that he thought it should, we should figure out a price depending on the rental charge of the chipper. I just think if we go any higher than five dollars, we're gonna lose the people we want to clean up the property and bring their leaves in, bring their grass clippings in, bring their branches in. Um, I think if we go any high, in my opinion, if we go any higher than five dollars, we'll lose them. And we're not, we don't wanna have to mess with, okay, your truck bed is eight feet long, so you need to pay X amount, just what you bring, five dollars. And it'll keep the paperwork simple, um, it'll keep our lives simpler, I think. And I think people will use it for five dollars.
Kind of a way to recycle.
Into the recycling.
And if people don't come and pick up the compost, I have the perfect place to take it.
Your bowl?
Yeah, my, my leg. Which has anybody noticed? Yeah, that's a lot of fillers in the barn.
Along that same lines, I researched with, first off, I called every state organization that has the equipment sitting in the yard for cities to buy from them or whatever. No chippers, I called, uh, the cities, all the different looks, I looked on the line for all of them. There was only one and it was like seventeen thousand dollars way out of our budget, so getting a chipper from them. So then I researched the cost of a chipper and these folks called Woodland Mills have a wonderful little WC eight-eight, um, wood chipper, which is really nice and big and brand new, um, heavy duty, free shipping, three year warranty and the price is two thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars plus tax. So it's in that thirty-five hundred dollar range. It'll take up to an eight inch and if you have eight inches, you should be chopping that up for firewood.
That's true.
So, um, I'd like to just throw this out there, we have a phone number for them, um, if we'd like to look into that down the road too. And I identified thinking that maybe streets and parks might have money in their budget. Thinking they may, they may be the ones that would most, Joe taught me this.
Okay, now the chipper would be really useful down at the park.
And it is, it's, it's, it's big, I mean, it's, it's big like that fold up thing there, I mean, it's big. It's not a little toy thing.
Then the chips they come up with, they can use to decorate around the park, it's a win-win.
Yeah.
Is this tolerable by a?
Yes, because it would go behind the city truck. The two guys I talked to that are kind of knowledgeable about this kind of stuff, thought it was a pretty cool looking adventure. And they also said eight inches, if you're gonna bring an eight inch down, just chop that thing, we just have a chainsaw down there, John could just take the chainsaw and chop that up for five dollars worth of wood when they come in on the next adventure. So anyway, that was a little something extra. And I've also reached out, I'm looking to the, um, EPA for a small grant. So I've got a couple of places I've been looking.
I can let you know that the, uh, Lewis County Solid Waste has reached out to the mayor and asked him for some ideas. Uh, they have some grant money coming in and, uh, asking for some ideas. This is the money that they have typically used in the past to provide our, um, cleanup events, uh, where they've brought in, you know, different trucks and, and stuff and done the tire recycling and appliance recycling and things like that. And they're trying to get some ideas how the cities might be interested in using some of that county money. They mentioned something about a chipper, I don't know if they need to get a chipper themselves, but they decided they didn't wanna have a chipper and that's just why we can't get the chipper from them anymore. So, I don't know, that may be an avenue where we could get some funds from them.
Knowing that we keep asking for one.
Yeah, yeah, so that's a possibility. And that was one of the things that the mayor had come up with as an idea for, uh, some possible use of those funds. So, um, I have a call, Donna Zuber there at the, at the county solid waste to talk to her a little bit more about what these grant funds really are and.
Perfect.
So that's a possibility.
Very wonderful.
Very good. Any other discussion on limb disposal?
Will we be discussing this at the next meeting on our five dollar adventure?
Hopefully.
Do we have to keep discussing, can we just make a motion that it's gonna be five dollars and?
Well, we're talking jumping a little early, I don't know. Why don't we get the limbs taken care of and the thing going?
Well, we were supposed to open it up on the tenth, you missed that meeting, March the tenth, so things are gonna be open.
Oh.
Because.
And we haven't, God doesn't even know he's got the job yet.
No, Mike led us to believe he was ready to go the next day.
Yeah, Mike did motion.
And we've already done all that to give it to him and.
I went down there just maybe three hours ago and Traco's still down there and so are the limbs, so.
Mike seems to be able to reach him, for some reason I'm having trouble getting him to call me back, so I don't know what the deal is there. But I'll, if I can't get him to respond, I'll, I might get on him to respond.
Yeah, we're gonna open the side up down there on March the tenth, I think it was.
Well, that's aggressive.
We're aggressive.
We, we wanted.
We've been dealing with it forever.
Um, was it gonna be limited to Vader residents only? Or to the community or to people outside of the city?
Do you know, doesn't that, you know, doesn't that create extra work for John?
It does, I mean.
I, I think we have a big enough trouble with just ourselves, I don't know about anybody else.
And the people in the county can burn their own stuff in their yard.
Yeah.
People in this, the community is pretty much who I thought we were cleaning it up for and doing this for, so.
I just wanted, wasn't sure.
Ryderwood can burn, can't they?
They're in the county, so, well, they're in Calitz County, so I don't know.
Just go dump in the woods.
Yeah.
I think we should just keep it contained in this area, it would be easier to keep it contained, I, I think.
Me too.
Just curious, if you have a mind.
Oh, your comment?
Is this just gonna be, um, contained to Vader city limits or the UGA? Which one, or both?
Well, UGA can burn.
Yeah.
No, it can burn.
No, UGA cannot burn.
What's UGA?
Everything on the city of Bridge.
They should be, they're, they're in the county.
Yeah.
They're, they don't have the same regulations as the city.
I don't know, okay, maybe just same limits, but are we going to allow the people that live in the UGA to use stuff?
Oh, that's what I'm trying to balance.
They're under all the Vader ordinance citizen.
Actually, they're not, actually, they're not.
Oh, I guess they changed that law then the last time I read it, okay.
Well, the county won't enforce ours at this point, so they're only enforcing their own.
I'm just telling you what they've told me, what, what they've decided in the last couple of years.
Interior city then?
Yes.
So if I wanna bring my branches to chip, I can't?
No, you can come and we'll sell you five dollars worth of chips.
Smile, we're recycling tonight.
You could always move into town.
Yes.
There you go.
Oh my, party, party, I don't, I'm going really bad. You guys have a whole new thing.
Never mind.
So the people like being my, I mean, I know she can burn, but she can't come in and drop off, maybe she doesn't want to burn because it's nasty and smells bad.
Yeah, I don't like to burn.
You know, maybe she doesn't care for that. I mean, are we gonna? At least do the urban growth area and maybe.
See how it turns out and you shut it down later.
That might be a thought.
But how do we draw the line then?
Well, just the urban growth, there's a.
Try it for a season as an urban growth area.
Urban growth belongs to Vader.
That's part of the reason you're trying to do these improvements that the city's doing, of which this particular thing grew out of, is trying to create a cleaner, happier, safer, more developed place so it's more welcoming and not so randomly dumpy here and nice there and, um, so. I recall both. I mean, if we start, if we start the first season to see how it goes, just letting it go as, let's pretend, under, under the radar, urban growth area. And if it goes smoothly, cool, and if it doesn't go smoothly, say it's beyond our capacity, we've had to close it down to a narrow, narrower area, you know.
How much does urban growth agile?
I could show you on the map, I don't know that I could tell you like square footage.
Are we talking huge amount or little amount?
No, it's, uh, well, it includes all of, in Chana Valley.
So do you wanna say anybody with a ninety-five-nine-three zip code?
That goes way out towards Ryderwood even farther, so.
I'm just saying, where, where's the line? Is there a line of the urban growth?
There, there is a line, yeah, yeah, on the zoning map, you can.
I think, I think I would behoove you guys to view it as a quiet, it's open these days and times and see how it's received and used. Because part of the thing is, the original intent is one thing, but seeing where it goes as it's developed and used might lead us to new ideas and new negatives or positives that we have to address. And maybe have it as a, we can call it probationary period or a, um, what's another word for it?
Trial.
A trial period.
One year trial period.
One season or something, yeah.
Well, we should just end up and not put any regulations on it and then.
We can always just.
See where it was.
And overwhelm the sort of limbs.
Overwhelmed?
Yeah.
On the receipt, won't you know where they're from? Uh, you know, Mr. Smith from Ryderwood or?
Are we giving him a receipt?
I, I don't, for five bucks, you have to give us a receipt?
Yeah, I don't know, but if they bring money in here, they have to, I'm assuming you would have to. There, you're gonna charge them.
Right, yeah, like I say, it's paperwork kind of.
I took it.
Oh, we're doing a recite book.
We're good, we're good.
Little cash register, five dollar.
We're good.
You know, somebody's gonna wanna.
A little tiny receipt, but that's.
But it is gonna be cash only, no debit card. I draw the line there, but we're not, we're not in, in the, in the modern times.
Don't even go there.
I really don't see why people from outside the area would bring it into the inside of the area, into the town, but.
I think you have to be careful though about people who are, who are doing, I think you're gonna be surprised that there will be people that will want to. I know that a lot of the branches that are down there are from people outside of the city limits that have heard about it and brought it in here 'cause they, even from Calitz County, because it's cheaper to bring it here than to take it to their dump and have to pay to drop it.
Where? But that's not part of the urban growth though.
I know, I mean, I know, but that's what I'm saying, I think it would be wise to set a limit.
There was some major demolition style stuff down there, it wasn't, it didn't come from in town.
No, no.
Where are you guys speaking of?
I think we need to keep it closed.
It's down by the sewer.
Down by the sewer legumes? Down by the sewer legumes?
Down at the end of A Street, all at the end.
Goes that way?
Not familiar, it didn't sound very good.
And it was, there, there's some of the things that were down there, it looked like dump trucks had come and dumped off, I mean, it, it didn't.
Oh, we, we, not we, but I was in the truck unfortunately, certainly someone I was with tried to dump a, um, load of used hay from the dogs from winter and a rotted out dog, um, house over the bank by the Calitz, way down by the golf course. Oh yeah, we're now, we're talking, hundred and sixty dollar ticket sweetheart, yeah, hay today. I was like, okay, well.
So definitely some more discussion and it'll, it, it, it needs to, uh, have a well thought out plan.
Okay. But we can still get him going on it, right, cleaning it up, we can still.
Yeah, you guys have already approved that.
That's the magic portion is under discussion. That's, that's the biggie right there.
All right. Uh, last item on the agenda for tonight, item four, discussion about ordinance twenty seventeen oh six, inter-fund loan for code enforcement. I believe you have a copy of that, uh, ordinance from last year in there, in your packet. Let discussion begin.
Let the discussion begin. I was on that side of the table when this all happened, so, um, I totally understand the ten thousand dollars. But in this ordinance, I've read through this, I've underlined and everything, um, I thought that we were gonna take the ten thousand dollars and it's clearly states in here, uh, to be used on litigation action. So it was my assumption that we would dump it into the attorney's fund. But when I read this, it goes into the current fund, which is zero, zero, one, which, uh, is not the attorney's fund, correct. The other question I have is, is I thought that we were gonna take the whole ten thousand dollars out and put it in there, 'cause that's what this makes me think. And then, um, use it accordingly. And instead, we're taking out thirty-one hundred dollars came out of it last time, 'cause I remember the voucher, and then we'll be doing it that way. Um, so there was two things I was a little confused about.
It does state that in here that it will be pulled out as needed and that it will be based on the, okay? Well, you're saying, it doesn't say that, but I, I understand what's in it.
Well, well, I was, I was just thinking of out there, you know, when we were reading all of this and everybody was talking about it. The other thing in it is there's no actual dollar amount ever goes back into the loan. I mean, I see it says it must be repaid in three years, but at no time, does any payments go into it of any kind over monthly, um, like in a typical loan or?
That's because it will, it will be paid back when the litigation is complete and we receive the funds for any fines or fees regarding the litigation. That's how it's being paid back for. Well, I guess the confusion is, is, so, I mean, we wouldn't be able to make payments along the way, that's not the plan. The plan was to use this money to take the. The plan was to use this money to take the case to litigation. And that's where it is in right now, that thirty-one hundred or whatever the amount was, yeah, has been used to litigate and it's in, in the Superior Court right now, they actually have until Saturday, the twenty-fourth, to do work. They've been ordered by the Superior Court to do the work, it has to be done by Friday or Saturday, which is not looking good for them getting it done, but after that, then they will have missed their opportunity to, to do anything. And at that point, then the city has the opportunity to take the next step, which I can't tell you what that next step is. I know that one option is foreclosure on the liens, that, that is an option, but I think they will have another opportunity to work with the city, I think one last-ditch effort to work with the city, but in any event, the idea is to get it cleaned up and get the fines paid, and with the fines, we will make sure that we get enough fine of the, the fines to pay the litigation expenses. And so once that's complete and the city receives that money, that's when this loan will be paid back. That's, that was the, how it was presented to council, and I think they all agree that that's how it would have been presented to them. So that's the plan, that's the way it was written, was to allow for that and not make.
So, so also in here it says that monies will come out of the general fund to pay this. It doesn't specifically say repayment sums advanced from monies received by the current fund.
And that's the general fund, because the fines and fees will be entered into the current fund, yeah. And if some crazy thing happens and we don't get it, the current fund will have to find a way to pay it back. But that is a highly unlikely situation.
Judy, have a, yes?
I do, so, I know I'm not the, I've said this before, I'm not the brightest crayon in the box, but in my little pea brain here, the money we spent last year since I've been involved in this and been aware of it, it's not working, so why would we go ten thousand dollars farther in debt for another year if we can't make this balance itself out so the code enforcement actually pays for the attorneys? And like I said, I know I don't understand all the legalities in and out, in and outs and all of this kind of stuff, but if it isn't working, why would we agree to go ten thousand dollars farther in debt?
This was for a particular, a particular project, if you will, it wasn't for general code enforcement.
Last years.
Right, this is, this is for that one code enforcement action on one particular property.
But is this, didn't we already agree to do that, Ken Toss, isn't this saying we're gonna do it now?
No, 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 no.
This is the same one.
We're revisiting the same one.
Asking questions about it.
I'm just questioning that.
We do have a comment from the audience, would you like to take it?
Well, you're not talking about Mr. Miller, because that was settled, what house are we talking, is Mrs. Nutter's place? What house are you talking about now you think you're gonna get money out of?
Can we?
Is it?
Public record.
The main court is public.
It's a legal case, I don't know if it matters.
Which, which house, is it your house or did?
I don't.
The three-story one on History?
Yes. Yes, yes. I'm answering you, yes, yeah.
She said it.
Fire me. I don't think it's.
The one with the underlying sixty thousand dollar loan, that's one you guys think you're gonna get money out of to pay this nightmare off.
Yeah, I just, I don't get this at all because we spent, we spent forty thousand dollars in twenty-seventeen on code enforcement.
So you want people to move into Vader like, like wrecking yards, I mean, that's, that's pretty much.
Well, we have two of them right now.
I know, and you're so tied up in litigation because we, I mean, this is a new thing, we, this is a new thing. So I mean, we have all these cases and litigation that we have to, and it is working. How many places have been cleaned up, there have been several places cleaned up around town.
Just name one.
F Street, drive down F Street, Parsons took down three different places.
Parsons took down some stuff, but he, he wasn't under code enforcement.
No, but the people that, he got those places for.
And the other guy that, he's still under one, VCA, the one at the very end, the oldest general. You know, some of these other ones aren't even being cleaned up.
There are definite properties that have met the regulations.
I do think we'll make some improvements, I think the courtesy letters really, really, I know you kind of grin every time I say these. The courtesy letters I think will make a big difference, I think that will help a lot, and lowering from, you know, the five hundred to the two hundred and fifty, I think that will be substantial as well, but I don't, I don't see that we're coming out breaking even at all.
Code enforcement isn't about breaking even, code enforcement is about making the city more livable and increasing, and increasing property values for, for you and your neighbors, that's what it's about. And safety, of course, and.
What has it cost the city though?
Beating, beating and dead horse, I mean, just the courtesy letters.
Excuse me, let's keep it to the, the topic on discussion here is the inter-fund loan.
So, so I guess my question's, I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable with the answers that I was given on this. Because to me it's just an open, it's just an open blanket. We raise, we raise our sewer rates and then we turn around and we take the money out of that little fund that we've been saving to, to put towards the new sewer plant because it's required to do that, so we borrow money from them, and I don't see that it's valuably money spent, I, I think it's.
We already proved this, right?
We proved this.
I was, I was just talking about, we already proved it.
Yep. Judy, Judy has some things to say about it, she wanted some clarification on, on, on.
I want clarification on, on some of it because, you know, it, it's a loan and it says a loan and it doesn't look like a loan to me, it has no, no payment, payback. It didn't go into the fund, it says it's going in, it's actually going into the general fund when in fact right here it says it's for legal, for litigation action.
Well, all of our, all of our attorney's related costs come out of the general fund. You know, there's just the general fund and then there's all these other subheaders, headers under it, right? And there's parks, there's streets, and we're all under general fund, so by saying it's under general fund, it's just saying it's part of city budget, I don't know how else to.
Well, I understand all that, but I know it has a line item. Yes, because it's, it's separate than other attorney costs.
But it's not a separate fund, it's.
No, it's not a separate fund, but it has a line item, I mean, yeah. So as you asked for it to be specifically put in the budget, so I put it specifically in the budget to show where that line item to keep, and the only reason we need any of those line items in the current fund is for our own budgeting use, the state doesn't require us to have all those different line items. They don't, they have us roll everything up into one number, that whole fund gets rolled up. The street fund and the current fund all get rolled up into one big number when we do our annual report, that's what they want to know. They, they said the, the other line items are for, you know, breaking it down like that. The budget isn't approved by line item, it's approved by fund total.
Okay, okay, I'm through.
We have one other comment from the public, would you care to take it?
Sure. Is there a plan to repay this, I mean, I know in a perfect world, we'll get all the money back and we'll pay it back and we'll lump sum gave up. Is there a plan to pay this back if you don't? Say you get the house and it's not worth what you think you were gonna get and you have to pay all this money, is there another plan?
The plan would be at that year's budget cycle, when we go to plan for budget, you know, it would just come out of the general fund. It would just be that much less that we have to spend towards regular city government expenses. Any other discussion?
No, I'm happy, thank you.
Judy's happy. That is the end of the city business, last but not least is public comment.
Oh, Jason was all worried about it. Presence were passed, no one has signed up.
We do not have any public comment tonight. The meeting is adjourned at seven oh two PM.